... I'm not the president, but I'm walking through the office. I'm trying to mark for you and what the little guys are saying. But I know we're being simulated by the folks that are people who live in their politics, can't do the things they're operating down there, and they're not being able to help. Um, the administration is so much of a one way now for two years. The long story is now big enough that the administration is standing up, standing there, not walking, they're helping to turn things around, it's just going to go down with their... The administration is by clients, lawyers, across their family, and we're looking at them, and they're the 2000s, the health, the health, the public, the law, the... It's supposed to be a place, which is a monetary policy, which is finding out to you, if you are able to get through on the left side, about these many, many times, kind of, you want to be a medicate. Uh, and we see that our kind of funding policies have huge, oh, thank you, have huge premiums or huge deductives, uh, deductibles, uh, that are putting it out of reach. So we've got a massive crisis here. I am afraid that we are simply watching the destruction of the American healthcare system, which for all of its flaws, uh, was still the finest in the world. It was the most innovative, it was the most advanced, it was the most responsive to individual needs, uh, anywhere in the world, and the testimony of that comes from all of the people around the world who came to America to get top quality healthcare. We're watching all of that now in a death spiral. Um, what's going to happen? I can't foretell. Uh, I, this, uh, next week, the House will have a measure on the floor, uh, that guarantees, uh, that if you, uh, if you did like your plan, you can keep it, that will stop the cancellations due to Obamacare, uh, but that is not going to help the folks that are seeing the rate spiral that's being created. In fact, it will exacerbate the rate spiral, uh, because as, uh, that, that means fewer people moving into the Obamacare exchanges, which in turn will mean higher prices for those that remain in them. So it is, it is a mess. Uh, I think that the only way to correct the mess is to repeal the whole thing. Uh, if we can't repeal it, at least delay it. Um, and, uh, and, and replace it with a patient-centered system, where individuals are again in charge of their own health policies. And we can do that, but if you look at the enormous amount of tax credits and deductions that have been given to companies to provide healthcare for their employees, why don't we give those same exemptions and deductions and credits to the employees themselves, so they can afford to go out and search for the plan that best meets their own needs? Restore to them the freedom to shop across state lines if they can find a policy that better meets their needs? Restore to young people the, uh, the, the freedom to, to buy a catastrophic policy for, for, for pennies, uh, a day? Uh, restore to people the ability to put, uh, money, pre-tax money into health savings accounts to pay for their day-to-day costs? There are so many things, address the, the, the cost drivers, uh, such as medical malpractice that have, are driving so much of the, uh, the increase in these costs. Uh, there's so much that can be done to fix the flaws. I think that the Republicans were remiss in not putting that bill out. We've had it for like four years. We've never put it out on the House floor for a vote. I am pushing very hard to see that, that, that package does get to the floor, is voted out of the House, is put in the Senate, uh, and I think that that will help provoke a national debate on where to go from here. So that's, uh, that's, the, what I came here to talk about, uh, with respect to Obamacare, I know you probably have that and a whole bunch of other issues as well, so let me just open it up right now to...
If I can use the podium for that, and I'll use this for Q and A. Anyone have a question?
Okay. I know the RIM fire was a big issue not very long ago, and, uh, obviously it's going to have a major negative impact ultimately on Topeka County. Is there anything that's going to happen? Any, I mean, I don't know, can people sue the federal government for mismanagement? Or is, can there be a stream of income coming here to kind of make up for the loss of jobs? I mean, what's going to happen?
Well, I mean, the first thing we have to do is, is salvage the fire-killed timber. I mean, we've got 400 square miles of, of fire-killed timber. SPI on its private land is able to harvest that timber, and you're seeing those, those fire-killed logs go out now. But, uh, most of the devastation was on federal lands, uh, and we cannot salvage that dead timber because of environmental regulations. It will take more than a year for the environmental review, uh, and then the litigation starts, and the litigants don't have to win their cases, all they have to do is run out the clock. Uh, if the timber sits there for more than a year, most of its value for salvage is destroyed. Uh, if it sits there for two years, it's completely gone. Right now, we could raise enormous amounts of money for the federal government by selling the salvage rights to that timber, uh, if it's in salvageable condition. That is, if it can be done by next spring. Uh, if we fail to do that, uh, and, and by the way, that revenue could then be used for the replanting of the forest, for the recovery of, of the, uh, region. If we, if we allow the normal laws to run their effect, and then all the litigation after that, the timber will be unsalvageable, recovery of those lands will be infinitely more expensive. And we've got another thing, the bark beetles are, I am told, are absolutely infesting the, uh, the fire region now. There is going to be an explosion of these beetles if that timber is not removed and removed soon. And, and the, um, those beetles will then go to work not only in the fire area, uh, but in the areas that were spared from the fire. Uh, and those areas have been so badly choked by overgrowth that they will fall victim. Uh, you know, this comes down to, to, to a, a war on timber harvesting that's been waged by the environmental left for the past 40 years. Uh, you know, a, a forester told me long ago, "All that excess timber is coming out of the forest one way or another. It's either going to be, uh, carried out, or it's going to be burned out." But it will come out. When we carried it out, we had much healthier forests, uh, and we had a thriving economy. Uh, and since the environmental left took over and consigned our forests to a policy of benign neglect, uh, we have had increasingly frequent and increasingly severe forest fires, and now all of the aftermath that goes on. If we don't salvage that dead timber soon, what will happen is brush will take over all of the fire areas. Brush has first claim on, on fire-damaged lands. Uh, within a couple of years, the fire-killed timber will stop, will start toppling over onto that five to eight feet of brush that will have built up. And then you have set a, the, uh, the stage for another massive fire with the next, uh, with the next lightning strike. Um, uh, you know, the, the left says, "If you just leave it alone, Mother Nature will regrow the forest." And that's true, in several centuries it will, but it won't be in our lifetimes. And it, and in the meantime, we'll have consigned the rest of the forests to the same kind of devastation, uh, that we just saw at Yosemite. Uh, we've had an 80% reduction in timber harvesting, uh, over the past 30 years. Uh, that means that the, the forests are horribly overgrown, they are, are now subject to forest fire, they're subject to pestilence, they're subject to disease, and until we change those policies, we're simply going to be repeating this cycle. So that's where we are right now. The good news is, we have, you know, my, my measure, uh, would suspend those laws to get the timber harv, uh, salvage done, uh, by next year. Uh, and then we have the Hastings bill, uh, which has already left the House of Representatives, uh, which restores sound forest management practices to our national forests. The problem is, it will stop dead in the Senate until there's a change of sentiment there.
I said, so that, we're not going to win any of those issues. What's going to happen is, just like, they're just going to essentially bury it, and the trees will rot, and the worst-case scenario will occur, and the people of Topeka County are the ones that are going to be basically bearing the burden of that. And I know the left loves lawyers to sue just about everybody in the world. Can, is there some way to sue the federal government and, and, you know, at least impose some kind of a financial penalty on them for their mismanagement?
Well, there ought to be. Uh, the, the, the federal government has been a lousy steward of the lands for the last 30 or 40 years. Uh, but unfortunately, no, there's no way to sue the federal government for mismanagement. Uh, what we can do is, is with our votes, uh, replace this regime with a new one that understands sound forest management practices. Um, but, you know, that's, that's a, that's simply a matter of political will. Um, uh, what you can do here in Topeka County is write letters to the editor, not just to the local newspapers, uh, but to the national newspapers where this debate is going on. Uh, you know, the San Francisco Chronicle, uh, for example, or the Sacramento, or Fresno, or Modesto Bee's, four of the most leftist newspapers in the country. Uh, you'll see this deluge of propaganda from them. Start writing letters, and if they don't publish them, then, uh, then send them to a rival newspaper and see if the rival newspaper will publish them.
Hello, Tom, my name is Frank Vera. Thanks for coming. What's on the radar is, with the Democrats, is immigration amnesty. Um, can the Republicans put forward a humane, uh, package that addresses a problem with these people? What I would suggest would be offering every foreign national who's in the country illegally $10,000 to return home. It would be cheaper than deporting them, it would save us money, it would open up thousands, tens of thousands of jobs that Americans desperately need, and it would be, the left could not say anything bad about it because it's, it's actually humane way of dealing with it, and it would, it would benefit everybody all the way around, the host countries where they came from, the American citizens, and it would save the taxpayers money, because it costs about $50,000 to deport each one.
Well, the, 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 the big problem is, the immigration law is not being enforced. You mentioned, well, you know, isn't there a humane plan? Well, yeah, there was a humane plan, it was in 1986 when President Reagan signed the Immigration Reform Act of that year, uh, and it was based on two parts. Number one, legalize the then 3 million illegal immigrants then in the country, uh, and restore the integrity of our borders, uh, by, uh, forbidding employment of illegal aliens, uh, and enforcing, uh, the, the, the borders themselves. Um, the amnesty went into effect immediately, uh, we never had enforcement, and, and that's the basic problem. What you've just described is, is essentially the Bracero program, uh, that we had successfully for many decades, in which migrant labor would come across the border, um, as they did, they would make a sizable deposit at the border, uh, in exchange for legal permission to come and to work in the United States for the season. They had all of the protection of American laws, they could work for the season, and at the end of that period, they're required to return to their country, and they picked up their deposit plus interest on the way back out, and they could do that every year. Uh, that was a system that worked pretty well. Um, the, the problem today is that any repeat of the Reagan legislation in 1986 requires a trust that future immigration laws will be enforced. And my problem with that is, if our current immigration laws are being decidedly unenforced by this administration, why would I trust them to enforce any more serious laws in the future? There is no trust there, and, and that's why I think you're not going to see any, uh, action on a serious immigration bill, uh, for the duration of this administration, uh, because, uh, the, the House simply has no confidence that this president is going to enforce any future immigration law. And, and, and that's just based on his past conduct.
Oh, thank you. This is more of an announcement than a, than a question, but late this afternoon, I read that Senators Manchin and Kirk, Democrat and Republican respectively, um, filed, is that the right word, filed a bill or submitted a bill in the Senate to delay the individual mandate for one year.
Well, I, I, I tell you, that is enormously infuriating to me, and ought to be infuriating to everybody, because that's exactly what the Republicans proposed, uh, before the shutdown. Fund the entire government, fund Obamacare, fund the exchanges, just delay the individual mandate for a year. The Democrats refused to negotiate on that point, said absolutely not. The government shut down for 16 days in the resulting impasse of, and now they're coming back and saying, "Oh, we've changed our minds, let's delay the individual mandate for a year." After putting the country through all of that, I find that absolutely infuriating. Uh, but, uh, having said that, the individual mandate needs to be, uh, you know, again, that's what, that's, that's was the proposal we put out on September 30th. Uh, but that by itself isn't going to solve the problem. It will solve a small part of the problem, but it will create other problems. The, the basic, the, the basic challenge is, this system is simply unworkable. Um, if you delay the individual mandate, you've got a lot of people claiming policies, for example, for pre-existing conditions, that was supposed to be all subsidized by forcing other people to pay vastly inflated rates for their health insurance. If you delay the individual mandate, you can't force those people into the overpriced Obamacare exchanges, therefore you can't subsidize the promises you've already made. It is, it is a, a fundamental failure of central planning. It just doesn't work.
Okay, yeah. Hey, thank you for coming and seeing the people. Hey, I wanted to, uh, ask you, um, what we can do to, uh, hold your colleagues in Washington, uh, accountable for, uh, um, basically, they're, they have violated their oath of office to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States against foreign and domestic enemies, and I do this freely, without any reservation, to the best of my ability and good faith. And so, basically, they've sworn and subscribed an oath to the Constitution, and so they are guilty of felony perjury. So that, so there, so it's a criminal act as far as one of the people to hold them accountable. What can you do to hold your colleagues accountable for felony perjury against their oath?
Well, that's a, it's a question I get asked a lot in various ways. The, um, and, and it occurs to me, as I've, as I've thought through the problem, any of our laws are enforceable through a vast enforcement bureaucracy, local, state, federal police. Um, the Constitution doesn't have that kind of enforcement mechanism. It has certain checks and balances that are supposed to contain, uh, abuses, but it doesn't have a precise...
It does.
Enforcement, well, yeah, let me, let me get to the point, because you're, you're right, it, it does have one enforcement mechanism, and that's the insistence of the American people, that the people that they elect abide by that oath of office, and to kick them out of office if they violate that oath. And that's the other thing, and if I could just digress a little bit from that, there's a broader issue involved, because you hear this all the time, over the NSA spying, for example, "Oh, well, that's for national security. It's all right to violate the Fourth Amendment for national security." Uh, you know, after all, the safety of the country is, is supreme. Um, uh, that was one of the, uh, one of the rationales for a unilateral attack on Syria a few months ago. Um, it occurs to me, though, that that oath that you just stated, think about the oath that's required of every elected official and every member of the military. Preserve, protect, and defend the United States of America. No, 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 that's not quite right, it's not, not the United, it's preserve, protect, and defend the United States government. That's not right, exactly. It, we, we don't pledge to, to protect the country, we don't pledge to protect the government. The pledge is to protect the Constitution of the United States, and that's there for a very important reason, because the American founders knew, if we ever lose the Constitution, we have already lost the country. And that's the thing, is we look at, I mean, I could, I could go into, to all the ways that the, the fundamental structure of the Constitution is beginning to break down. Um, of, of, the, the president claiming unilateral authority to, to, uh, plunge the country into war without congressional authorization. Um, the, the president's assertion that he has the authority to nullify laws he doesn't like, or to apply laws to some people but not to others, of, in direct violation of the central tenet of the Second Article of the Constitution, to see that the laws are faithfully executed. Um, we saw a huge breakdown in the origination clause of the Constitution, which gives the power of the purse to the representatives of the people just over the last few weeks. The House of Representatives, and the House of Representatives alone, has the authority to appropriate funds. People seem to have lost sight of that, but there's, that's been, that's been, uh, the situation since, since the days of Magna Carta, that the, 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 the executive requests funds, but the representatives of the people, and only the representatives of the people, can actually provide those funds. That's why the House and the House alone, through the origination clause in Article One, has the authority of the purse strings. It is through the authority of the purse strings that the Congress oversees the operations of the federal government. It was the power of the purse strings that ended the war in Vietnam, for example. Uh, the executive very rarely gets what he asks for, uh, from the House of Representatives every year. Uh, when we, what we just went through in the, in the shutdown is a, is a perfect example of that. The House first, uh, considers the president's request and says, "Well, we're not going to give you everything you want, we're going to give you everything, we're going to fund the entire government at every level you've requested except for Obamacare." Now, that thing goes over to the Senate. The Senate doesn't have appropriation power, the Senate can either, can either concur with the appropriation and send it on to the president, or propose amendments back to the House. In this case, the Senate did neither. Uh, they simply refused to negotiate. So the House sent them a second bill and said, "Okay, fine, we'll fund the entire government, we will fund Obamacare, we just want it delayed for a year." That went over to the Senate, they refused to negotiate. We then sent a third proposal, said, "Okay, we'll fund, we'll fund the entire government, we'll fund Obamacare, we will fund the exchanges even, uh, we just asked for a one-year delay." And that was also stonewalled. Now, that by itself is a huge breakdown. Think about it, we've got two separate Houses in the legislative branch, and they're designed to disagree, they're supposed to disagree with each other, they're designed to have a different perspective on things. The only way that a system like that can, can, can function at all, is once each House has exercised its own independent judgment. Those two Houses are then supposed to come together in a conference, isolate their differences, and then work out the differences. That is precisely what makes the legislative branch function at all, and it's functioned like that for 225 years, until last month, when the Senate absolutely refused even to negotiate or discuss the differences. Now, how that affects the, the origination clause is this. Ultimately, faced with the Hobson's choice of continuing the, the shutdown, or giving the president everything he wanted, the Republican leadership capitulated and gave him everything he wanted. What happens in the future? Does the executive now set the spending levels, and if the House comes under any of those spending levels, it can be thwarted simply by refusing to, to, uh, to, to negotiate the differences between the two Houses? And if that's the case, then on January 15th, when we do this again, the Congress is going to have, the House is going to have the, the Hobson's choice of either giving the president everything he wants, or going through another government shutdown, which I think is unthinkable, it's not going to happen. If that's the case, then we have lost the origination clause as a practical matter from our Constitution. So, you know, all these things keep piling up on each other. We haven't even talked about the, the violation of the, the First Amendment with the IRS scandal, uh, the violation of the Fourth Amendment with the NSA scandals, all of that. My point is, the structure, the, the Roman Republic died over a period of about eight years, as the executive usurped powers that had been traditionally, for hundreds of years, reserved to the Senate and to the people. Um, yet the Senate continued for 400 years after that. The, the form was still there, the Roman Senate continued to meet for 400 years, but the structure had disintegrated, it was gone, it didn't mean anything. It became a rotting porch, where you could see, you can see the porch, you can see the form of the porch, but it is a hollow shell that ultimately collapses. That is what will happen to our Constitution if we allow this disintegration to continue. And ultimately, that's the responsibility of each of us as citizens, because we own that Constitution, we made that very clear in the first three words, "We, the people," that's ours, and, and ultimately, it's our responsibility to insist that it be fully abided by.
Thank you again for coming. Uh, this sort of begs the question about Eric Holder, because so much of this deals with law and justice and pursuing, uh, legal, legal, well, anyway, he's been censured by Congress. Is that a meaningless gesture? I mean, he's still in office?
He's been held in contempt by Congress.
I'm, right, he's been held in contempt. Does that actually mean anything besides showing disapproval? He's still in office, he is mall exercising all his powers, and not pursuing any of the outright criminality going on in different areas of government? What can be done about that, or what does that mean?
Well, I mean, the, the only power that Congress has, short of holding him in contempt, uh, is, is to impeach him, and impeachment is reserved for high crimes and misdemeanors. Um, in, unless a high crime or misdemeanor is presented, uh, to the House, it would be highly inappropriate to take any action under that clause of the Constitution. Uh, so ultimately, it comes down to the, the president can remove him, if the president chooses not to remove him, the president's accountable for that. The president just went through an election, uh, in, in which his actions were affirmed by the American people. Now, that may be changing now, as people awaken to, to a lot of the damage that's going on, but, uh, that's the situation right now. It comes down to what Abraham Lincoln said many years ago, he said, "The voters are everything. If the voters get their backsides too close to the fire, they're just going to have to sit on the blisters a while." It, it's a painful experience, but it's a learning experience, and they emerge from that experience sadder but wiser. And, uh, my hope is that, that ultimately will occur here in this country, before we lose our Constitution and the structure that keeps us free.
Thank you for being here. You've been a great advocate for Republican answers to healthcare issues, and on your website, you have quite a few really good articles about legislation that's been proposed. Within the last decade, we did have a fairly massive Republican healthcare reform, and that was Medicare Part D that was passed about a decade ago and implemented about seven years ago. That was the greatest unfunded, one of the greatest unfunded entitlements that we've had passed in this country. And at the, at the time, actually, the rollout was fairly horrible, uh, they had a hard time getting the numbers right, and one of the biggest aspects, um, there were also, uh, a lot of issues with getting people to sign up, but also, there were penalties with that. I don't know if people knew, it was a mandate also, uh, you had to sign up for that, or there was a penalty. But the biggest issue about that was that it stopped drug companies from being able to negotiate pharmaceutical prices with the pharma companies, and it drove up the cost of, uh, payments that Medicare recipients in Part D had to pay for their drugs compared to like the VA who can negotiate with the government. Um, so I know probably a lot of people here are paying a little bit more for their drugs because of that. It's disingenuous then to attack Obamacare as one of the ends of the United States as we know it, when in fact, just very recently, uh, if, if you were going to pay for Medicare Part D, you would have to put $17 trillion in an account, in a trust account right now. And that's Bruce Bartlett, a conservative economist through Reason, Libertarian Magazine. So, so there were massive issues with that. At the time, no one tried to shut down the government and have, uh, a complete meltdown of the country. Um, so I just, it's definitely disingenuous, and I wanted to get your feelings on that.
First of all, I have absolutely nothing good to say about, uh, Medicare Part D. Uh, you're absolutely right, it was completely unfunded, uh, uh, program, uh, it was the biggest expansion of entitlement spending since the Great Society. Um, it did a great deal, uh, to boost a, what were then horrible deficits, unprecedented deficits, they look rather quaint by today's Obama standards, but they were, they were huge at the time. Uh, I would not have supported it if I were in Congress, I have criticized it at every opportunity, but Medicare Part D did not cost four and a half million Americans their health insurance that they liked and they were promised they could keep. It was not put on, it did not put us on a course to cost Americans 100 and, to cost 129 million Americans their health insurance. We, we take turns here, um, and we don't interrupt each other, okay? We try not to. Um, uh, this is a quantum leap from what we saw, uh, under the Bush administration, uh, and it is destroying what was once the finest healthcare system in the world. And if you doubt that for a second, I invite you to peruse the hundreds and hundreds, in fact, I think it now numbers in the thousands, of heartrending frantic complaints I'm getting from constituents that are getting these notices, that are seeing their rates double or triple, that are seeing their hours cut back at work. Uh, one lady saw her salary cut 23% as her employer is trying to fit these new mandates into their budget. Uh, you cannot compare the two.
Actually, it was found that, that it's not a job killer, so that's actually a debunked statement, but that's the case, no, I'm sorry, I get the, I get the chance to rebuttal, please, I'm American, I get the chance to speak.
No, 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 we're not going to interrupt each other, it's her turn, go ahead.
I just am saying, at the time, Medicare recipients at that time also saw their rates go up, and, but at that time, we didn't say that it was the worst thing that happened, and it was, you know, fascism come, and no one had a fit. Um, I signed up for Obamacare in California, I got on the website, it worked great, and I actually am saving money. And I know a lot of people who have those stories also.
Now, the estimate is about...
And I know recently Sean Hannity had four couples up who said it was destructive to them, but then when people looked into it, they would have actually saved money, but they'd been trained to hate it so much that they decided not to get on the website. $800 a month average they would have saved on their healthcare, they were actually ill-informed. And so, I'm, I'm just asking if you think it's disingenuous to, to paint Obamacare as sort of, I mean, you called it a fever dream on your website, is it disingenuous to label it that way, when in fact, we've had something that was just as equally, $17 trillion is a pretty big price tag for something, you can at least say they're comparable.
Again, I think you, you, you've got a complete dissonance in the scale of these blunders, and they were both blunders, they were both blunders, but this one, this one is appalling. Again, my turn now, okay? Again, my turn now, okay? You seem to believe that you know what's better for every American than each American themselves, and I just, and that's the foundation of Obamacare. And the fact of the matter is, you're right, okay, again, we try to take turns here and we don't interrupt each other. I'm not, well, let me just go through a couple of points you made. You said, you said that this was not a job killer. The Congressional Budget Office is estimating that Obamacare is going to cost the economy a net loss of 800,000 jobs. That's not a conservative think tank, that's the Congressional Budget Office. We were promised, if you liked your plan, you could keep it. Four and a half million Americans have already found that out to be a lie, and again, the estimates are that that number is going to grow over the next year to as many as 129 million Americans are going to find out that was a lie. We were told it was going to bend the cost curve down and save $2,500 on average. The most recent estimate I've seen is now the average policy with deductions, copayments, and premiums is going up about $3,500 per policy. You're right, a few people are going to benefit from this, but the vast majority are going to be harmed. 85% of Americans had health policies that they liked at the beginning of Obamacare. We have now destroyed the entire American health care system for the 15%, and that is crazy. What we should have done is repaired the flaws in the current system, and that's what I am pushing the Republican leadership to put out on the floor at the earliest opportunity, so that the American people can see that there still is a choice.
It's my understanding that you have the highest record in Congress for voting with the Constitution. Some 94% of your votes are constitutional votes, and I want to thank you for that. My other question is, are we headed for a civil war in the Republican Party? Are conservatives going to have to find another, another party to have their voice heard?
You know, I don't think so. I mean, there have been tactical disagreements among Republicans for a long time, and the disagreements you saw over the past month were tactical. They were, the Republicans are united in their opposition to Obamacare, and I think that all the warnings that we've issued over the past four years, or three years now, have now been borne out. The American people are finally discovering that those warnings were accurate. So, no, I, look, there's, there's, there's always a party of, in every country, in every period of history, there's always a party of liberty, and there's always a party of authoritarianism. I think those are just two conflicting elements in our own human nature, and they play out en masse in politics. There's always a large group of people who simply want to be left alone, to lead their own lives according to their own best judgment, to enjoy the fruit of their own labors, to raise their kids according to their own standards, to enter into voluntary associations with others for their, for their mutual betterment. And there's always a smaller but more domineering group of people who think they're so good at running their own lives that, by George, they're also entitled to run everybody else's. And I think that every political conflict ultimately comes down to those two competing elements in our own human nature. Lincoln, in the last of the debates with Stephen Douglas, put it this way, he said, "That is the real question. That's the question that will continue in this country when these poor tongues of Judge Douglas and myself shall be silent." He said, "It is the eternal struggle between these two principles, right and wrong, throughout the world. They're the same two principles that have stood face to face from the beginning of time and will ever continue to struggle. The one is the common right of humanity, the other is the divine right of kings. It is the same principle in whatever shape it develops itself. It's the same spirit that says, 'You work and toil and make bread, and I will eat it.' No matter what shape it comes, whether from the mouth of a king who seeks to bestride the people of his nation and live by the fruit of their labor, or from one race of men as an apology for enslaving another race, it is the same tyrannical principle." And I think that's it in a nutshell. That is all politics. It's the right of people to be free, it is the notion that people get their rights from the laws of nature and of nature's God, and that we create governments to protect those rights, versus the divine right of kings, that our betters have a right to order us about, all for the mutual betterment of society. Those are two antithetical philosophies, they have plagued mankind from the beginning of recorded history, and no doubt will until the end. The greatest antidote for that party of authoritarianism was the American Constitution and the American Revolution. We are the latest inheritors of the legacy of that, and we've got to keep it alive, because Lincoln was right, it is the last best hope of mankind on earth.
Hi. So, for those of you who may not know, when the big banks allowed the economy to crash a few years ago, a law was put in place to place regulations on the trading that those banks were doing that harmed the American people, caused millions of people to lose their homes. Recently, the banks drafted a bill that would repeal those regulations put in place, and you voted for that. So, I was just wondering why you would vote for the banks against the interests of certainly every American citizen in this room, except yourself?
Well, I think you've got it exactly opposite on all points except my vote. You're talking of Dodd-Frank. Dodd-Frank is what institutionalized this whole notion of too big to fail, and that it's the responsibility of individuals who had no part of a bad decision by a bank to indemnify that bank for its losses. I find that absolutely appalling. I was opposed to the original bailouts, and I was opposed to institutionalizing them through Dodd-Frank. I voted against Dodd-Frank, and I voted for the bill to start repealing Dodd-Frank. Your analysis of the, of the housing crash, I think, is exactly wrong. We all know what was happening in those days. The federal government was requiring loans to be made in marginal markets, not only requiring banks to make loans, but also assuring them that taxpayers would indemnify them for any bad loans that were being made through Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. The result was, banks made loans to people who had no possibility of repaying those loans. The banks did that partly by force and partly by, by the carrot of, "Don't worry, we'll buy up all those bad loans for you, and you'll be held harmless." So you get to make all the profit without bearing any of the risk. That is an iniquitous system, and that's what Dodd-Frank institutionalizes. I must tell you, I think that the most important reform we could have in the banking industry is getting back to the days when, if a bank made a bad loan, it ate the loan, and it went away sadder but wiser. And if a consumer took out a loan they couldn't repay, the consumer lost the collateral and went away sadder but wiser. But in either case, they left the rest of us alone. We all make bad decisions at one time or another in our lives. I happen to be living in one at this very moment. But those bad decisions that we make are the price we pay for all, for the freedom to make all the good decisions that we make in our lives. Innocent people should not be held liable for the bad decisions of others. That's what Dodd-Frank institutionalizes, that's what the bailout began, and I'm opposed to that, to that policy.
I'd like to thank you for coming here and giving me a voice I'm about to express right now. I have three things I'd like to express to you. I have an observation, I'd like to extend an invitation, and I would like to ask you a question at the end. First of all, my name is John P. DeGrazio. I'm an entrepreneur, I'm a capitalist, but I also appreciate and respect our environment. And I own a business called Why Explore Yosemite Adventures? The Yosemite part of that should tip you off on why I'm here. I am the face of the government shutdown. I am the face of the rim fire. My business was devastated by the rim fire, and I will not, I'm not here to call names, I'm not here to profess love to either side of the aisle, because, to be honest with you, I have a political science degree, and I don't, I don't participate in either party's politics. I think both are equally to blame for this mess that our country is in. I believe very strongly that the tactics that your faction of your party caused negatively impacted me and my life directly, and I'm looking for accountability from you and the faction of your party, and I want you to look at my face and to see who I am. And as far as my invitation, I would like to invite you to come walk with me in the Yosemite wilderness. I'm also a historian. In 1963, Howard Zahnizer drafted the Wilderness Act, and that act was to protect our forests, especially our national parks. We built up over the last several decades legislation that protects our environment, and to strip those away in the state of an emergency, I believe, is not the most prudent thing to do. So I invite you to come to Yosemite. Let's walk along the Merced River and see what is wrong with it and needs to be repaired, and see how it can return to its free-flowing conditions. And if you still want some ice cream after that, we can go to Curry Village, we could go to the General Store, we could go to Yosemite Lodge, there are still many, many other places where you can find that ice cream cone. And finally, my question to you is, as far as demanding accountability, I really would like that. And I would like to know, who is going to pay my mortgage this month? Who is going to pay my bills when we had a senseless shutdown? Now, I'm schooled enough to know about rhetoric, which side is to blame, I really don't want to rehash it anymore, coming in here, I have an open mind, I'm willing to listen to you, and I will not insult you at all, I just don't want to be insulted, and I would really like to answer, like you to answer those questions. We had to give away, from August through the end of October, we had to return money that we already collected from our clients, we lost five figures of income that I don't have to pay my mortgage, my bills, and now winter is here, how am I going to survive?
Well, let me try to answer both questions. First, regarding the shutdown, you know, this was the 18th government shutdown in the last 37 years. Fifteen of those 18 shutdowns occurred when Democrats were in control of the House. It was over issues like expanded abortion funding, environmental issues, labor issues. Perhaps we don't remember those shutdowns as vividly, because at the time, we had presidents who were determined to negotiate 24 hours a day to resolve the impasse as quickly as possible. And while the impasse was being resolved, they took every measure to minimize the harm and damage being done to individuals because of the shutdown. This administration made exactly the opposite determination. They refused to negotiate. Now, I know you don't want to rehash this, but the reason I have to mention it is because these are the facts, and as John Adams said, "Facts are stubborn things." Republicans proposed, weeks before the shutdown, to, and again, exercising their legitimate constitutional responsibility to superintend the nation's finances. We set forth the parameters for the funding. Instead of the Senate acting on that and then coming together in compromise, backed by the President, they refused to negotiate. We came back a second time and said, "Fine, we'll fund the government of, we'll fund Obamacare, just delay it for a year." They wouldn't negotiate. We then said, "Fine, we'll fund all of it, except just give us a one-year delay in the individual mandate." And once again, they refused to negotiate. We saw the train wreck coming, and we tried to stop it. I don't know what else morally we could do under those circumstances. To blame the Republicans for a shutdown when Republicans went out of their way and compromised and compromised and compromised, trying to find a solution, I frankly find rather a stretch. Now, here's, here's what has to happen from here. We can never again allow the federal government to use the kind of ruthless tactics that we saw in this shutdown. Barricading open-air memorials and barricading parks to which the public normally has 24-hour-a-day unrestricted access was unprecedented, it was vindictive, and it was wrong. I am... Now, by the way, in about a month or so, we're working on this now, in about a month or so, I expect to be introducing legislation that, in any future shutdown, will forbid any federal land manager from closing any areas that normally have open air, but public, unrestricted public access, will forbid them from trying to shut down businesses who simply lease federal land, will forbid them from turning people out of their homes just because those homes are on leased federal land, will prohibit them from doing things like the administration tried to do barring Florida fishermen from, from the, from access to the ocean. These are vindictive acts that were deliberately designed to make a political point, and that must never be tolerated again. And finally, will forbid them from doing anything that would, would abrogate contracts or reservations. The shutdown was a terrible thing, and the only thing that I could imagine worse than that was watching the collapse of our health care system in the process. And unfortunately, we failed, we didn't have the American people behind us. I think now, as, as they begin to get the full taste of what it was we were trying to delay or prevent, they'll have a different perspective. With respect to the environment, I must hardly disagree with you. Environmentalism does not mean leaving our forests to benign neglect. When we, as I said earlier, when we harvested the excess timber out of our forests, we had much healthier forests, much less frequent or ferocious forest fires, and we had a thriving economy. What we have done is consign our forests to a state of benign neglect where they have become morbidly overgrown, and it's just a matter of time for the next fire. It is imperative that we remove the excess of fire-killed timber from the parks while it is still salvageable. If we are able to do that, we will then be able to fund the reforestation of those, of those destroyed areas before brush takes them over. One more thought on that, and that is, the, the original purpose of Yosemite, I think you misstated. If you look at the original legislation, you will find that the measure signed by Abraham Lincoln at the urging of John Muir, "Set aside Yosemite for public use, resort, and recreation for all time." Let me repeat that so it sinks in. Public use, resort, and recreation, inalienable for all time, quite right. What we're watching is that turned on its head, and instead of welcoming the public to Yosemite for its use, resort, and recreation, we're telling them to look but don't touch. I mean, that's the whole Merced River plan that would tear out the bicycle rentals, the river raft rentals, the horseback riding rentals, the ice skating rink at Curry Village, close two of the three swimming pools. Let me tell you something, tourists don't go where they're not wanted, and those measures are going to have a huge impact on tourism permanently at Yosemite Park, and probably impact your business as well. Thank you.